Good morning, welcome to June 24 regular session of Board of Supervisors. Roll call please, Mr. Short.
Here.
Brandt?
Here.
Kurtanbath?
Here.
Leland?
Here.
Paul?
Here. Please join in the moment as I notice to reflect on this morning's actions. Please carry the mantle and join for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or amended. Send me a second. All the favor say aye.
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 She carries. Item two, public comments. This is time for anyone to speak on item that is not on today's agenda, either in the room or online. Seeing none, we've got it. Item three is presentation by Community Social Services with Mary.
Hi, good morning. Um, oh, I'm sorry, okay. And low camera trouble there. Um, good morning. Um, I'm Mary from County Social Services. I was asked to come and give an update on the new Behavioral Health Service System. Um, Governor Reynolds proposed legislation that was passed and that will sunset all of the Mental Health and Disability Services Regions effective June 30th. So, beginning on July 1st, all disability access point services, meaning disabled disability services, for example, people that struggle with brain injury, um, intellectual disabilities, long-term persistent mental health issues, they, um, will be funded, if not funded otherwise, through Iowa Primary Care Association, I'm sorry, through East Central Region. If somebody is having behavioral health issues, mental health issues, or substance use issues, that will go through Iowa Primary Care Association. Um, to be able to reach the East Central Region, um, they're not going to have an office regularly here in Black Hawk County. Um, I'm being told that they're seeking space and they may be here one day a week. Um, we don't have an address for that yet, but their phone number's gonna be 319-892-5671. Or you can go to their website, which is ECRIowa.com. Everything behavioral health and substance use related is going through, um, Iowa Primary Care Association. They do not plan on having a full-time office here in Black Hawk County either. All of their contacts are gonna go through Your Life Iowa, which is the current Your Life Iowa phone number, and that's 855-581-8111. And then if there's a crisis, of course, people can call 988. So unfortunately, as of Friday, we will not have any coordinators or people here in the Pinecrest Building to assist with any mental health disability services needs. I don't have a lot of other information, not a lot of information's being shared with us, other than phone numbers, so I really wish I had information to share with you. I am being told that services that are being paid for now will continue to be paid for through the end of the calendar year. Um, I don't know what the plan is starting in '26. So, does anybody have any questions? I'll do my best to answer, but I really probably don't have a lot of answers, to be completely honest with you.
Mary, has that been something, when you say the services through the end of the calendar year, which would be this year, is that something you've received in writing or some type of documentation, I guess, that would make some of us feel better? It's timely that you're on today, like without even being planned, I said, we have the judicial house position, referee position to discuss later, but I said, and that being one of the services, you know, that's critical in this timeline.
Yeah, um, to be honest with you, I was told that in the meeting with HHS. Um, I have not seen that in writing. I can look to see if I have that in any meeting notes, and I'm happy to forward that to you if I can put my hands on it. Um, a lot of this has been verbal, not a lot of information's been given to the regions. So, I, I feel like I'm in the dark as much as everybody else to some degree, and I apologize for that.
No, no, you apologize, and I know you know, we've reached out to you, I think, too, just in search of some more information, just saying, is there anything you could direct us to? So, I appreciate that, and certainly appreciate the fact that, you know, there's nothing you could do in this, but you were trying.
Yeah.
Mary, can you get us something in an email with all this contact information as well?
Absolutely.
This, this weekend, I got asked about this issue, and I didn't know where to, to guide them, uh, so, any information that's been passed along at this point?
Absolutely.
I do believe there's a lot of concern in our community, not having someone here all the time or during the week.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and also too, if you look back at any of our board packets, um, the information that I've been receiving has been coming to your representative on our board, but I'm happy to send the information as well.
Thank you. And, and just for your information, I didn't know if you're staying on the call or not, but I said, in the packet of information that I'm providing to the board is the letter that you sent out January 1st of this year, giving some of that information and explaining, I think, to others, like what was gonna be the process and the sunset in June 30th and that.
Yeah.
And you're like, okay, here we go, so, thank you for that, if that is included in there, I think that helps.
Okay, good, and I'll, I'll forward anything else I have as well. The ultimate goal at the end of the day is so that individuals continue to get the services they need, so we're gonna do everything we can on our end to get that linkage.
Do you have people coming in the office now? I was gonna say.
Yeah.
And you're expecting it through Friday, obviously, and then just what, hanging the shingle on the door?
I already, yeah, I already hung a notice on the door. Um, we've been trying to communicate it on our Facebook page. Um, we're trying to communicate it to community partners. Um, our walk-ins here in Black Hawk County aren't as high as some of the other areas because we have such robust services here, but we do get some walk-ins. Fortunately, we share office space with Colleen Shipper, and she's amazing, so she'll be able to give people numbers as well.
And so what's in line for you and staff, I guess, at the moment, or what are the plans?
Well, about half my staff have found other jobs, and half of us are going to be unemployed. So, it's, it's rough. Um, across the state, um, we're estimating approximately 200 people will be unemployed because of this.
And several, are those positions, probably several of them, like some of these are just people in limbo, waiting to hear if contracts are renewed and that type of thing too, until we know?
Yeah, contracts have gone out from Iowa Primary Care Association and the DAPs. Unfortunately, some services that they've chosen to not continue, for example, Challenge to Change, they provide emotion regulation kind of training for kids in the schools, and I know some of our Waterloo Elementary Schools utilize it, as well as Cedar Falls. Um, but effective July 1st, the state's no longer gonna allow, um, the behavioral health system to pay for those services.
Mary, can you?
So, we are gonna see some changes.
Mary, can you speak to some of the other programs that are not gonna continue as a result of the real?
Well, yeah, um, there are things that are just really up in the air that we don't know are gonna be paid for. A lot of it is in the judicial sector. Um, I know you have the judicial referee on there. I don't know if that's gonna continue to be paid or not. Um, things like, for example, we've given money to One City United to help increase their peer services. Um, I don't know that things like that are gonna continue to happen. It's a lot of the smaller agencies. Um, we do have larger organizations here in Black Hawk County, so I think they'll probably pick up the slack of what's not being paid other places, but we'll see. I don't know financially they'll be able to do it either.
I know in the conversations, um, we've had with others and reaching out, just regarding, I guess, the referee position, but, um, kind of reaching out to pathways, those that we know that have contracts and are waiting to see, and then also Black Hawk Grandee Mental Health is another, and I said, everybody just got in limbo right now with questions that need to be answered about services or what's expected, and while it wasn't a comfort regarding this position, um, while we're looking for information too, but checking with others, they're all seeming to be in that same group.
Mm-hmm.
Just hoping that something comes up between July of now and the end of the month.
Yeah, and that's the scary part is, because obviously, we're coming up very quickly to the end of the month, and, you know, we are part of a 12-county region, and we're not able to give anybody answers. And like I said, Waterloo's very fortunate, our Black Hawk County, because we have robust services, there's some more rural areas that they really depend on us because we're kind of it. And so, it's kind of scary. I don't know what's gonna really happen.
And thank you for coming today and sharing this information. Like I said, it's, it's hard to see it happening, I guess, within, um, our, the ranks that we have for the services being provided and, and for you as staff, and, and, like I said, we've worked with County Social Services forever with different type of working relationships, um, over the years.
Yeah.
Sir, appreciate the services you've done. Sorry to see you.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions for Mary? Thank you, Mary, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Um, move on to item four, Claims and Payments. Uh, it's a resolution for the Board of Supervisors to approve its expenditures, uh, that the county audit would be authorized to directly issue payments against the various settlements of said claim it does allow. So, move.
Second.
Good morning, Board. Um, our total bill payment today is $994,594.36. Out of that, the 60/40 fund, we're paying $2,925.38. We are making some capital payments today. Courthouse Construction to Peters, $102,895.69. That is of course replacement, our replacement revenue, and more ARPA projects, payment to Aspro for Cedar Valley Nature Trail, $60,807.1. Next installment on the jail HVAC project to Young Plumbing for $132,583.90. Peters Construction for the IT server room, $49,447.93. And then, let's see, also to Peters, the HVAC Pinecrest upgrade, a payment of $85,669.35. And we've Play Power completed two projects in the parks, a playground at Black Hawk Park, paying them $47,554.74, and McCarlin Park, $32,240.6. And then, we are also making a payment to Peterson Contractors from the Local Option Tax Fund for Brandon Road Grading Project, and that's $37,912.90. And also, from the Geo Bonds, um, Conservation is making a payment on the Hartman Erosion Control Project for Acity Excavating for $59,923.25. So, it has been busy construction time this last month. Everything appears to be in order. Any questions for me today?
All right, it's a resolution. Roll call please.
Brandt?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leland?
Yes.
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. Item five, uh, project updates from department heads or elected officials.
Good morning, Board, Kathy McClosset Engineer. Uh, we've just started our first round of mowing the gravel roads. We are several weeks late, later than we would like to be starting the mowing, just due to the elbow ring issue. Uh, Donald Street, we've, we have that closed, excuse me, it is not closed, there, there is a traffic signal system in place that is delaying traffic. Donald Street is open, uh, we are replacing, improving culvert there, and that is in preparation for our resurfacing of that portion of Donald Street between Sage Road and Raymond Road next summer. We need to, uh, get a few of the culverts, uh, replaced. Uh, lastly, I wanted to, uh, set up a brief work session with you, probably in July, to talk about funding our maintenance, our office project in the future. Uh, one way, of course, we've talked about discussing that funding would be to change the language of the local option sales tax. And I would just like to have a work session on to, to inform you of some of the progress we've made on that, some of the language we would like to propose, and then, uh, talking about placing it on the ballot possibly this November. I wanted to ask you if you would have time in July, for example, July 8th, 15th, or 22nd, or the 29th, if some of those dates work for you.
I would have a preference for the 8th. I'll be dialed in on the 8th.
So, it works good. I was gonna say, probably since it's a work session, you're talking about kind of updating us, at least getting the progress of where we're at in the options.
Right. Does the 8th work for you, Chris?
Um, I will be traveling, but I'll be attending the meeting, so that's, that's okay.
Okay, so I, I'll schedule it for July 8th?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads or elected officials? All right, we'll move to item six, the bit of approval for the June 17th meeting. So, move. Second. Got a motion in the second, all the favor say aye.
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 She carries. Item seven, the consent agenda. Uh, the, the items listed will be acted upon by a single resolution without separate discussion unless someone from the board or the public requests that a specific item be considered separately.
I do have a question on that before we make a motion. Uh, Kathy, can you help us with the three and four in this, with the telephone right of way? It's stating the same area, this is the reason for two permits and this kind of?
I will have to check on that. I apologize if I didn't pay that close attention to the agenda. But we will check on that, unless you have an answer for that. Allison, are you, would you be able to answer that?
Okay.
I'm sorry, can you repeat what you said?
And the consent agenda items three and four, do those, they appear to be this similar, have similar language? Are they two different permits?
Uh, those are two different permits.
Okay. We can get more information from you.
That's fine. I was just wondering if there was, what the reason was for the two separate permits? I can find out afterwards.
Okay.
Just verifying it was two separate permits.
We'll, we'll get back to you with more information. Thank you, Allison.
With that, motion to approve.
Second. I believe one of them maybe should say East Central, I don't know if that's what it works. Yeah, I think one of them should say East Central Iowa R E C of Urbana for placement of overhead and underground electric utility.
That's number two.
Yeah. Yeah, but that's listed two times on here, in the E. So, I thought maybe they were just. They, they have one for Buchanan, but then they also have one for King Road. We might be.
Missing one.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that when I looked at the agenda, but yes, I think the sec, the item three should read, just gonna read it out loud. Prove the permit for utility work for East Central Iowa R E C Urbana Iowa for placement of overhead and underground electric utility on the right of way on King Road, instead of East, Gresson, Gresson and Sage.
But those are completely different though, one's for Redland, one's for East Central.
Yep.
So, should we wait a week?
Right.
To clear that up? Kathy, is it, the timing maybe is critical, well for us to have this done?
So, I don't know that for fact, some of these utility companies are submitting their paperwork several months in advance. Yes, sometimes it is right before they wanna start work, so I, I can't tell you right, right now how soon, if this will hold them up, if we, we put it back on the agenda for next week, is that what you're suggesting?
I don't know. I'm suggesting, I guess, just to open-ended, I mean, can we do something, look into it, get the correct language in before the meeting's over, because we have several discussions for today.
Yeah, I, yes.
I'm, I'm just, if that's a possibility and helps everybody, but if not, we can delay it too.
Yeah, I, I'll go back to the office when we get to my act next item and then try and get it corrected.
Yeah, just to make sure we have them on, okay.
Okay.
So, we won't?
Everybody?
Yep, so we won't act on item seven for now.
Okay.
And, um, we'll come back to it. Does that work? Mike?
Um, so we're, we're gonna come back later in the same meeting?
Yes.
Is that what we're, we're up here for the whole consent agenda?
Well, the whole consent agenda looks like it's trying to make clear.
We might as well.
Yeah, we, we have, uh, my understanding is that the only, the only question is as to items, uh, B, three, and B four.
I would rather just go ahead and take all of the consent agenda.
As long as we're doing it in this meeting, that's.
Yep. Go ahead. Thank you. All right. Item eight, contracts and agreements. Uh, it's a resolution that the General Assistance Agreement, uh, three percent increase between Black Hawk County, East and Eastside Administrative Alliance, Jesse Cosby Neighborhood Center, and Operation Threshold to establish requirements that each agency shall comply, uh, with to be entitled to allocate designated funds to eligible Black Hawk County residents applying for sheltering, uh, energy assistance effective July 1st, 2025. To be approved and directed chair design for the same as recommended by Kathy, or Colleen Shipper, I'm so used to it. Uh, Colleen Shipper, General Assistance Court Director.
Okay, first, before we get into this, I just wanna put a plug in for County Social Services, just been house with them for a long time. I've witnessed the great work that they've done, and they're gonna be irreplaceable, so. And then, going into this, um, the only change within the agreements is just a three percent increase for the administrative dollars. We've been doing that for several years. Just wanna thank Eastside Ministerial Jesse Cosby and Operation Threshold for their continued partnerships, for going into year 22 of the partnerships, and I just think that's pretty amazing to be going that long, and it's something to really be proud of to keep those agencies on board for that long. So, do you have any questions regarding that?
You've always been so complimentary of the relationship and all of them and the assistance they provide us, their help and the services they're doing for us.
Yeah, they do a super job. I don't know, they just, it's non-stop traffic, phone calls and people in their offices every day, all day long, and it's only getting busier. Um, this last month, it just seems like it's really picked up, and I don't, there's just a lot of changes going on, so you can't see that changing anytime soon, so. And I think you're going right into the judicial hospital referee.
Yep, that'll be next.
Yeah, well, instead of, yeah, well, see, you have a next step on yours, but I was gonna say, if that's all right.
Yeah, that's fine, I just have a couple of comments about that, so stay up there if you wanna go into that one.
If you want, it's up to you, if you wanna make them now, or if you wanna do it when the item's up, it's up to you.
Yeah, um, I, I don't have a, a lot of information on that, I've looked back, and I think that contract was generated in around 2007. I believe Bob Lincoln is the first one that brought that agreement to head, and then, at that time, mental health, through County Social Services, started paying 70% of that for the mental health commitments, and then I've been paying 30% of that ever since then for the substance abuse commitments. As far as I know, all of the substance abuse, like Mary said, is probably gonna be flipping over to Iowa Primary Care. I've tried to make phone calls, I have no solid information with that. So, right now, I pay all of the attorney fees, the transportation, um, hospital charges out of general assistance funds. I've been hearing that that's all gonna be going through Iowa Primary Care, but I don't know, nobody will give me a solid answer, so maybe after July 1st, I'll start reaching out again. So, I don't, I have no idea what should happen with the judicial hospital referee, especially for the 30% substance abuse.
Well, that's what we're all trying to waiting on, and that's what part of the discussion is today, is, is just.
Yeah.
Getting the information out to everybody on this, and then we have, like I say, this week, more information's supposed to be coming, but we'll all see how that works and flows, and.
Yeah.
Otherwise, then, we have time still to have this on the agenda next week as well.
Okay, but that's all the information I have on that.
Yeah, you've been providing comments, I said, everybody's been reaching out to everybody that had anything to do with County Social Services or Bob Lincoln's, um, previous, like I said, where without several people transitioning, retirements, so.
Yeah, everything I had looked back on, he was the first one that generated that contract, so I'm not sure what even happened to it before that, as far as who was paying the judicial hospital referee, I had no idea prior to the 2007.
That's okay, it wasn't up to you to, to find that, it was just we appreciated your.
And even the substance abuse charges in general, I never paid those out of general assistance before Bob came, and then he's the one that started having me pay the attorney fees and all of that out of general assistance, which has worked well, but I think that's all changing, but I don't know that. So, I went ahead and budgeted for substance abuse, just in case.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Good to know. You may be speaking again, we'll, we'll see.
That's all right.
Thank you, Colleen.
Do we have a motion on the resolution for item eight? So, move.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Uh, roll call please.
Leland?
Yes.
Kurtanbath?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. Item nine A, uh, it's an update and discussion of the judicial hospitalization referee contract.
And Chris, I apologize that, um, I was doing this just at the very last minute, and I apologize, I didn't send it, but I will send out the notes that I've made and, and the packet of information to you right after the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Um, I was gonna say, just to start out on this, I was gonna say, there was a meeting that we had May 23rd, I better recap that, kind of what's happened since that time with Judge Licar and Lena and myself, but, um, I thought we have individuals in, in to here today that will help. Um, Kellyanne was unable to be here, um, as well as Lena. Last week, we tried to do this, and, um, I think, uh, Chief Judge was in court in Grandee Center, Lena was on the road. We tried, and today, then, we thought, let's get this done today, and, um, Judge Licar and Lena are both in the Judicial Council Meeting in Des Moines, so we said we would have the meeting, get the information out to the board, have as much as possible, allowing us still time to act or see what happens in this next week. Um, but today, we have the, um, with us, Brian Williams County Attorney, who is willing to add comments and talk to this, Diane Larson, who is the actual referee in that, that position, and has been for, I believe, uh, over 20 years, we know, I, maybe, I don't think anybody's said it, a definite year, it's just been, we've both been saying over 20 years. Ashley's with us today also, there's the Assistant Court Administrator from the representation from their office, so there's a, a host of people, and Mary McKinnell, obviously, still on the Colleen, if there's anything, uh, you feel add, to add or incorrect, but Brian, yes, looks like you're ready to make some statements about it and introduce this, or I can do some comments too, so go ahead.
Yep, so Brian Williams, Black Hawk County Attorney, uh, was made aware of this issue about a week and a half ago. So, there's layers to this, um, one of which is the county's role, which I'm learning more and more since the last one happened, including 30 seconds ago. And then there's the county attorney's role, so we have kind of different perspectives, not different, but I, I wasn't aware that the county really had a role in this. When it comes to the actual physical hearings, uh, we offer, um, support on behalf of the petition, so people that are petitioning for someone to be committed, my office handles that. But, you know, I'd say we average, Diane can correct me, probably two or three a day, probably daily, I used to butt heads with Mike even during some of these, back in the day.
I've got some of those.
I won, by the way. I won by the way, um. So, I, I think my objective here today is to, just, just kinda talk about how indispensable this role is. Since COVID, um, we've had a plan in place where we do it by phone. Used, back, back in the old days, we used to drive to the hospital and have these hearings, we'd take an afternoon. Now, we can call in, have these hearings. Uh, Chief Judge Licar wanted me to, I guess essentially, I do, I do have the memo, I think the board got from Chief Judge Licar, kinda just about the, the role that, that the hospitalization referee, uh, plays and, and all this. I don't know what it looks like if we lose this position. I'm not gonna be a fan of whatever it is, because it's probably gonna be, back in the old days, doing half-day hearings, going into a courtroom, doing all this kinda stuff. I don't know the number, I think, uh, Supervisor Leland quoted me three fifty-four, three sixty-three.
For the cases?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, and I should probably have introduced to some of these statistics, but I was gonna say, um, Judge Licar provided, and that's why I said I kinda summarized some of this information and will provide everything else, like I said, was that we have four hundred and eleven open mental health cases involving mental impairment and/or substance use cases. Twenty-five of these were involving juvenile. And also to your earlier comment, it says, hospitalization and review hearings are conducted in Blackhawk County, three to five days per week, with one to four cases here on each of those days.
Yeah, it's, it's Monday through Friday.
So it's. Correct it all, please.
Yes, Monday through Friday and there are some days we don't have any, there's some days we have three. Uh, we, we statuteoid are not required to cover the substance abuse related criminals, but we are required by statute to, to, uh, to do the mental health.
And that's where that seventy-thirty split has come, I think, for the repayment back to the state, is that, okay.
Just heard that from Colleen, I think.
Yeah, it is, that's what she's been doing and, yeah, I was gonna say. Cause that was the question.
So we, we only do the substance abuse and again, it's kind of a different perspective because, you know, we, we represent the state in criminal cases, we represent the county, um, and then there's just one thing in the code that says, oh, the county attorney's supposed to do this, which is kinda weird, uh, that we represent the petitioner, usually it's mom and dad or the hospital who's seeking to, uh, commit someone, uh, but we do those again, uh, virtually every day. My, my position is, is that this, this role is indispensable. I think, I got, Diane can speak to this, I, cause I don't know, but I don't think there's many counties that have a hospitalization referee. I think most are judges, district court or otherwise, that, that cover these, um, and Diane serves an indispensable role, uh, for us and for the county itself, so. I'm happy to answer any questions, I just kinda want the board to understand what our role is here and what the role of the hospitalization referee is.
I was gonna ask this, maybe if we kind of run through some of the summarized information here and then if anyone disagrees or has something to add to it, or if this is something, a point, because like you said, there were several things, um, obviously we just discussed and the packet I, I have for you as well, because I was gonna say, but included, uh, the county social services letter that was initiated earlier on by Mary, that kinda told of all this change that was gonna be going on and the sun setting and that type of thing. So I did include her letter, but it also showed the new districts and that we are in District Seven now and I think it was fourteen, uh, counties that are included in that. In the packet, there's also a contractor, it was the previous contract, but up for services, so that everyone have an opportunity to see what that, how that was designated, but, yeah.
The changes that are coming, I, I can't speak to, uh, cause I don't, I, I learned, uh, learned of this the last week and a half and wasn't sure, quite sure what was really going on with that. Redistricting I was aware of, um, didn't really have an impact on us so much, but, uh, something I was aware of just through the, the process.
Well, Judge Licar, I mean, and Lena, your office, I'm sure, has been well aware of it and Diane too, of the unknown or in limbo, not really having the facts or having more information and, and that's what prompted the, the meeting of us, the three of us, Lena and I and Judge Licar, on the twenty-third, talking about the, what if, and, and thinking possibly this position wouldn't be funded and then what happens and what, uh, judge would like, was proposing that the county assume a hundred percent of that responsibility, cause we all knew there was the thirty-seventy split before. And so, um, like I said, the things that were discussed, I had just listed there that, you know, most of us know July one, this, and it's right upon us now and we're still waiting for information and that's why I said I followed up with other organizations too, just somebody looking for names that we did reach, because it was a website or it was just kind of this blast email site, uh, I mean, email address and slow responses or no responses, but nothing direct was being received to answer the questions of yes or no, where are we with this and we're coming into July one. And this whole month, I think there've been, um, three or four town hall meetings perhaps and thousands people on this call, obviously all with questions, all wanting information and not receiving the answers that they need to provide services July one. So, um, not that that's comforting to anybody, but we're all in that same boat, there is another, um, I think someone sent me a reminder that, over the weekend, that there was another town hall meeting coming this week, so I guess we're hoping something could come of that. But, you know, not expecting, maybe hoping, but not expecting a lot, but in the meantime, um, like I said, trying to align this up through the board to have as much information as possible and, um, knowing July first is next Tuesday, but saying then we have an opportunity too to review this information, to answer questions, get it, more information or input provided from anybody we'd like, um, and then next week have this on the agenda for discussion and board action. If that is the case that we'd want, I know there's several options, as I said to Kellyanne, there is some other things we haven't even considered probably to look at, what are our, our alternatives, either or, but worst case scenario, I know I put on this and, and it was much what you said, without a referee, the magistrates and district associate judges, she said would be required to cover the mental health and substance use cases. And she said that is done in some counties, although I'm sure they don't all have the sizable numbers we do, but it would result in delays and in the processing of indictable misdemeanors and et cetera, but there would be just.
Not to give Diane a big head here, but, uh,
That's okay.
She does have specialized knowledge, you know, um, but for her, we're, if we are a public magistrate or district court judge, uh, they're not gonna have the knowledge, the weapon ball to, to deal with these types of cases that Diane does and, been doing it for a long time, I've been doing it for a long time. And there is, there is something to them, there really is. They're different.
This is, this is Chris, um.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One of the things, one of the things I think we have to look into for next week, um, and one of the things I'm finding really frustrating in this moment is that I believe that this, the legislation that, uh, called for this whole rego- organization of mental health, uh, didn't, wasn't there explicit language barring the county from, um, making expenditures or property taxes on, uh, mental health services?
Well, that's come up, I don't know about the explicit language, I think we've not been able to put our hands on anything yet that
Yeah.
So that states that, so.
And, uh, and Judge Licar does make reference to the two code sections in this memo that she adds that I think would allow us to bypass anything, but again, I, I'd have to look at the, at the.
And that's how I started, um, like I say, this information of kinda providing what the judge is allowed to do and under what code. Uh, and so, let's see, it looks like we could do it, but yeah, you're right, Chris, that was a, that was what we were told back when this was kind of initiated, that the county was not to spend our, that was in there, but we've been doing it, so. Um, the contract for services included in some of this information, it gives the fiscal year twenty-five wages, Judge Licar provided also what would be for twenty-six, it's, I just ballpark it at sixty thousand dollars, so whether we do it at the thirty-seventy split, whether we do it at a hundred percent, you know, the dollar amount and where that is at and, and and Judge Licar, probably others have too, but has said nothing but raving reviews about Diane and, uh, how knowledgeable she is, how well experienced in the role and how good it's gone for over twenty years.
They're just, I mean, I, I don't wanna badmouth the judges, but they're not equipped currently, they're not.
Well, I think that was the struggle of how do we, how do we get through this and what is our alternative in that being the worst case scenario, but
Yep.
Thank you, um, it did sound like they'd be here next week.
So right now, we're just, we just don't know whether or not Iowa primary care is going to fund this, right? They very well could.
That would allow us, I guess it's the contract approval kind of we're looking for of how we fund it, but yes, they have that portion of it that county social services did previously, but.
I don't know if they'll fund the position necessarily, cause again, we are kind of alone in that area.
See, what, yeah, what would do is that, uh, they provide the payment, but then we'd reimburse the state is really kind of what we were doing before, so we were providing the services, it was just a seventy-thirty split of how county social services versus Blackhawk County.
And we are unique in that, um, and Diane can speak to this, in that we have the two hospitals, people from all over get dropped off here. And Justin, you know, you know this as well as I do, um, people from all the surrounding counties come to Blackhawk, they come to Allen, they come to Covenant for mental health. So, that does kind of create some issues sometimes, but, um, we do, our numbers are considerably up compared to some counties, yeah.
We did think the contract, we said we knew it was at least twenty years that it had been working, but we thought even in our conversation, it might have been, this gone on for thirty or forty years, it's just that with some of my previous people that were, don't have.
But it's a year-by-year contract.
Yes, annual, yeah, just year-by-year, yeah.
Are, are these cases where family members or are the two people have to go before and get kind of the blessing?
Yep.
As, okay. So here's, here's my question, what happens? This week has been, I don't know if the heat's bringing it out of people or what, but it's been pure madness all week at work and I, I don't know how many calls I've had running around trying to triage these situations and my question is what happens after the hospitalization? I mean, we've got a guy calling, trying to get his gun, out of my house by getting his gun back after a standoff not too terribly long ago and there's a whole lot of other stuff that goes into that, but my question is what, what happens after, uh, the committal?
Well, there's actually essentially three options, one is no committal, one is committal, and then the third is, is it inpatient outpatient? And it's usually determinative of what the doctor says. Most, I would say probably, uh, that they stay there, which is frustrating at times, um, but, uh, and then they have to follow outpatient.
As long as they want to, right?
No, it's no court order.
But if they don't?
Then there's a revocation of that outpatient, so they come back before court.
So then, then what happens?
Then they go back to probably an inpatient requirement, that's again, probably three days.
Yeah. And I'm not pointing, I, I understand.
No, it's frustrating for us too.
You're pissing me off, you're on words, it's just like, gosh, I think there's nothing we can do and it's the same people and things are getting more extreme and I guess this is just me venting right now, so I'm sorry.
No, I, I could, I'm right there with you, uh, I've had people who've been committed out of state and they've been there for thirty days. Whereas here it's three, so. Yeah.
From my understanding, the county has several responsibilities, unless it's not just funding and processing, connecting folks too, I mean, I'm gonna need more input on this, uh, theme one, I guess.
It's usually, I mean, the hospital will, will do that for them, who pays for it, I don't know, but the hospital will have an outreach person or a, a social worker that will connect them to services post hospitals there.
And that's part of the county supplying that?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
Here, here, uh, here's a question. For the, for the serious mental impairment, would there be any possibility, and maybe I'm just talking crazy here, uh, but I, I found this to be a very doable and logical solution that came from a nurse, uh, would there be any way to kinda imagine like a probation or something that goes along with that, so they do their inpatient, three to five days, then they get out and then just being court ordered to be on, I'm just gonna say a shot, I know it probably sounds terrible, but uh, whatever that medicinal regimen might be to kinda keep them.
That's that, that's that outpatient regimen that we talked about, where if you're not doing what you're supposed to do, they can come back in and do a revocation of that outpatient.
And so, picture like a, a, a team, a mobile team that could go out and confine these people and make, and it, it ensure that they're administering the medication.
Day-to-day stuff's a little bit more difficult, but just overall, if you're not keeping your appointments, if you're still back at your old ways, they'll come back to the courthouse, the doctor or whoever will come back in and try to revitalize that outpatient, but no, it's not, they're not gonna keep an eye on you that close.
Yeah, okay. I mean, four hundred and eleven open cases, that would probably be.
Yeah.
So right now, the county pays on the substance side, is that, that's our thirty, right?
Okay, yeah.
That probably is what skirts?
Yeah, yeah, oh, they're, they're, they're hand in hand.
Yeah, but in terms of what we're allowed to use dollars for?
I don't know, it's continued and it was just like, yeah, maybe it was contracts already in place, like I said, we, we remember being, hearing that language, but we didn't have it. I don't know what that would be, how easy that would be to acquire that information back, you know, when they changed all this for us.
How long ago was that?
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you remember how, when that was? I was gonna say when, when we actually did that shift.
When we did the shift of what?
The mental health services.
When they stopped allowing the county to contribute?
Remember they told, when the state said they were gonna take it over, they probably gave us the dates that mattered.
Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two in that time frame.
And I, I don't know that it was a directive, but we really felt it was, it was understood like Chris said that.
There had to have been some communication because we even, um, we had to deal with our mental health patient advocate had to be a prepayment and created kind of a worker keeping nightmare. So there, there had to have been direction that we were not supposed to pay or.
So what was the direction for that particular position?
But we, that, that was before I was here, we have not found any written documentation about that yet. But they did, you know, they did, they removed your ability to levy separately taxes to support that.
That was, yeah, I know that was.
And intent was, cause they were taking care of it.
They eliminated our ability to levy, to levy separately.
Mm-hmm. And we were also.
Is it, is it allowable under general?
I don't, I'm not aware of permission, it's just your capacity is the issue.
Sure.
See, that's the part, I think, we, we felt we were informed somehow, I'm not sure that we had, that, that we were kind of like, we took away the levy and no, you're not gonna be able to go use other funds for it, so that's the piece maybe, but would we have to clarify that though, like I said, for us to do this, that's gonna be something we're gonna have to do this week, I mean, if it were to take up from that week.
Right.
And to say, okay, we need to make sure we're not overstepping there. And as I said, there is supposed to be another town hall meeting, I hate to be too optimistic, I know, on that as well, but everybody's relying on that, like I said.
Right, and so is the, I mean, duty area too, but that's more of a.
Yeah.
Of the other sort of larger counties in the state, are they taking, or do they have the same sort of setup with referees or is it sort of scattered?
Um, I was able to reach out to Scott County, uh, they do, they do not, um, they use a magistrate to do it. Again, same concerns, um, I'm assuming there are other counties that do have a respiratory, that I just haven't spoken to, but you know?
I know a couple, I know Johnson County.
Johnson, yeah.
I think that a couple.
Yeah. Don't work together. Well, that's why I thought this at least gets the information out, as much as we've got really to date, there are some solutions, obviously we can talk about work through Health Lit, um, whatever, but, um, more questions or whatever, yeah. I guess that's what I'm thinking too, um, Judge mentioned, like, said she would make it work, I think, to be here next week. Um, she's supposed to technically be on vacation that day, Lena and, I think Ashley are supposed to be traveling in Dubuque County or but possibly would zoom in, so if there's any other questions of them, they do that, but maybe there's some work that you gotta nail.
You go between any of you that we need to do, just to talk. You go between any of you that we need to do, just to talk.
And Lena and I both said we'd attend the town hall meeting just this evening or something else.
Right.
We did have a presentation a handful of months ago from a group that was seeking this contract.
Yeah.
Were they the ones that were awarded the contract?
How did that work? Weren't they awarded it?
Yes, my understanding is they were awarded the contract, but the individual that came and spoke to us that was in charge and was going to be the director of that district subsequently resigned, so that's probably not helping our district.
Yeah.
And I don't know if they filled that position or not.
No.
Yeah, I was just looking, it looks like most of the leadership positions for our district now are still, they're work, where we got and they still haven't filled them for primary care, so.
That, that's primary care. The first individual is here, what would have been what is now called the East Central Region.
East Central Region, yeah.
For the two, that was for the disability.
It's only thirty-three percent of the state, so.
Yes, we have, I, I remember this district has the largest population other than the Des Moines Metro.
We used to have twenty-two counties. Like I said, when Bob Lincoln was running, we had twenty-two when we were kind of like the first that had the regionalization and.
But the, the idea that we're in with Lynn Johnson Scott, who lived in Dubuque, we are literally thirty-two percent of the state is, is in this region.
So, we've had conversations with Brian. I don't, is there anything Diane or that you'd like to add or anything? Just, okay, wanted you to have an opportunity if you do.
I wanna say a couple of things. I, I do wanna say that number was kind of high, the four hundred and sixteen, when I haven't seen that number for some time. And I, I have been trying to do some reading ever since I thought I might not be working as of July first, trying to weed through some of those numbers. So hopefully those numbers would be a little bit less than that. Some that just kind of drop off, they quit going to appointments. You don't know exactly what, what point to dismiss the case, but that's one thing. One thing I wanna say about a referee, I guess, whether it be me or somebody else, is it does tend to kind of grease things a little bit and get things moving. Obviously, the most important thing to us are the mentally ill and the substance abuse individuals who need assistance. But the, one of the best ways to get them assistance is to make sure we've got good resources. And right now, we've got two really good hospitals. We did have Sartori Hospital at one time, which did senior behavioral health, and that was a real loss when we lost that mental health unit. Over, over the time I've been doing this, I know that there've been the closings, closings of several mental health units across the state, which just puts the burden on, on everybody else. And I think we wanna be sure that we do what we can to make things as easy as possible for the hospitals. And that means if they, somebody needs to be transported, we need to get the transport going. If somebody needs to move a hearing to a different date, we need to get that hearing moved to a different date. I, I, I think it's more important to obviously to take care of the people in, in our community, but also to make sure that we keep the resources we can too. So I just wanna throw that in, that one of the advantages of having one person who deals with that, who that might be, just kind of keeps track of what's going on and make sure that, make sure that the orders aren't standing in the way of things getting done. I don't have anything else. Does anybody have anything for me?
Diane, what happens when you decide that you're done? Like, like, do we have a contingency plan? Like who? Is there somebody else that could start getting exposure now under you?
We have not very many attorneys who do defense work. And some of them would be good. Some of our past people would be good. I, I've never explored it. But when I got the job, it was applied for, it was applied for by people who had been doing it. And obviously, I'd be more than willing to help people along the way as far as picking things up. But if there's next person, I'd be more than happy to work with them, or if there's somebody who wanted to do it. We did have one attorney one time who said she'd really like to do it. It's, it's a unique job because I am on call twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five. So not just everybody wants to do that. It's not that I get bothered twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, but I'm on call that often. So not everybody wants to do that when they start thinking about it. But I would be more than happy to work with somebody who's getting close. And I was gonna, I did wanna answer a little bit about your question, about what happens when people are committed inpatient and then they go outpatient. There are different levels of outpatient treatment. We've got RHD in town and their level of care does provide for workers to go into the homes every day, several days a week, whatever, to make sure somebody's taking the pills to try to get them to appointments. That's a real high level of outpatient care. Then we've got Black Hawk Grande and some of the other, and they're wonderful about, you know, following up with people and making sure they come. If they're supposed to be coming and make calls and go out to their homes and visit them and everything else. So there are different levels, and we also have something that's called medication pickup. If somebody's on long, long acting injectable medications, so far, we're only using this with Black Hawk Grande. I've talked about it with Pathways, but they haven't jumped at it yet. And I did think I've talked about it at Elevate and they didn't jump at it either. But if somebody's taking long acting medications and they're not showing up, we can do an order that the sheriff picks them up and takes them to the facility, Black Hawk Grande, for instance. Or if Black Hawk Grande has closed, the hospital that they've made a deal with, which is usually Allen for Black Hawk Grande. And the, the person is given a choice. You can take a shot now, or we're going to admit you to the hospital and we'll do a revocation hearing. So we kind of coerce people into taking shots. And that's used, we, it's, it's used conservatively, but it's used on a regular basis now. But obviously, we don't do that with just everybody because it is a little bit coercive.
Right.
So there, there's some help out there.
Well, it's good to know because that's kind of aligned with what was suggested to me by that nurse in one of the ERs. And, and, and so to Tavis, to your point, four hundred people would be impossible. I agree, it would be impossible to keep up on that workload. The thing is, it's like probably five percent of that that are probably, and this is a rough estimation, that are the extreme ones that need the daily supervision. So, you know, people talk often about like, we have all these resources and one of these people yesterday gets kicked out of one of these shelters because she lives in an alternate universe, you know, and, and she can't function in normal society, unfortunately. So I tried to persuade her to go because she said she gets the shot. I go, I think it's time to probably, let's go back and get that looked at again. But she, anyway, she's not willing, not interested in doing that because she was fine. And, but anyway, we dealt with her for years and a perfect example of somebody who just needs that oversight, I think.
Yeah. And of course, the next step up from that is, is inpatient someplace in a residential setting. An unlocked situation usually, and then it moves up from there to someplace like MHI. But there's not very many beds for residential equipment that's in show. Have to do the best you can in the community.
Yeah, thank you.
So next steps on this is hearing from a few more folks next week. Hopefully, you're in.
Yeah, probably not adding much more than what we know unless there's something that happens, like I said, this week. Which, but certainly an opportunity for discussion and possible solutions if we have any other thoughts or, like I said, we, there are. I know her request was really, you know, for county to make, pay the hundred percent. And certainly, one of the possibilities is that I know there's others that may be willing to assist in different things that we could talk about, whether it's short term or long term solutions. But to do, come back and have that discussion in action.
If, if we wanted to open up like a community donation type of thing, how would we do that? Like if people, all right, let's say I'm worth ten million dollars and I just wanna, I wanna help out in some way, shape, or I just don't know how. And this is the perfect way. How would we begin that? Maybe nobody donates people a dollar, but is there anything on the finance side that would have to happen?
Other than organizing?
Other than what?
Just organizing how the funds get here, get deposited.
Because it, to me, it'd be something similar that, I mean, we've not tried that, but it's something similar to the Veterans Affairs. They get donations and receive donations, and we have to do a good job of tracking that and spreading it and taking.
Which is just no problem.
But that's not an issue for us. It's just going about that. So, so it's possible.
Would that have to be a separate five oh one C three type scenario?
Not if it came to the county. We just would set up separate tracking and our general ledger for it.
Do you think in like short term basis or long term or all of the above?
Uh, because, because, I mean, what we're looking at now is exploring how we're going to fund it through tax dollars, right? So, and if there's any prohibitions on how that's done, then this would be kind of a way to circumvent that. Assuming that, is what, what would we need to cover? Seventy percent?
Well, potentially a hundred.
Potentially a hundred. Brian, is that something, I know, is Mike gonna be on vacation tomorrow for a couple of weeks. Is that something you or your office could help us with as far as this legal side of it and working through some of that? Didn't know what your workload was either this week to say like, hey.
We're getting calls, so, yeah.
Presumably, another alternative there would be a conversation with like a Schweitz Foundation, where the county could apply for a grant through Schweitz to offset the, and then they could set up a fund and sort of create a balance there. You know, or another foundation that, Schweitz, but that would, I would think maybe be a little cleaner for us if we had an arrangement, if we had a, an approval from a granting of a philanthropic institution to cover the expense. That way, it doesn't come out of, of general funds if we're not.
No, but I think what he was suggesting was not using county funds, and so that, that was looking at outside dollars, so that's right now.
So then philanthropic could be the sort of institution that, whatever, runs that.
Could be your individuals or whatever, but yeah, that they could do it, you know.
Just your local funding.
Yeah.
Or we challenge the state on it, which I'm perfectly comfortable with if they're going to insist.
I don't wanna probably be too optimistic, but I just keep thinking about that. Everybody's in this ish, and it's like, they can't just leave everybody hanging after July one on things. Or at least without some kind of response saying, go ahead and fund these and we'll work through it, but whatever, but I'd like to see that.
I did hear Kathy say, she paid for it. We didn't have any funds.
Oh. Picked it on her already.
Maybe we'll get someone else to research this.
Yeah, let's get, you have a first choice.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah. Huh?
Clear as mud.
Oh, it's actually a lot clearer than it was. So I'd say a lot of conversations have been had since even then, but I was gonna say, including, yeah, like I said, Brian, when we talked about some things, so clear as mud.
Appreciate everyone's work on it thus far. Thank you for taking the lead there. Item nine B, motion that the revision of the Black Hawk County General Assistance Policy to Increase Income Guidelines to Match One Hundred Percent of the Poverty Guidelines to be effective July one, twenty twenty-five be approved as recommended by Coleen Schipper, General Assistance Coordinator.
Okay, if this is the only change within the General Assistance Policy for this one year twenty-six, so far, the budget has been sustaining the increase yearly without having to increase the overall budget. I don't know about how it's gonna be this year, but that's all we can do is try. And so far, it's been doing good with the increase. Our numbers have went up a little bit with the increase each year, but not like I thought they might, so it hasn't been a big problem.
It was two or two years ago or three years ago that you asked us to do this, I think, put it at this level and kind of.
Yeah, and we'll just continue to do it yearly. I think this is the one that brought that up. And like this year, starting July first, the income guidelines for one person will be thirteen oh four seventeen. So we are reaching a lot more than what we were just a few years ago, even, so. And every General Assistance County throughout the state is totally all over the place with this. Some of them are at fifty percent poverty guidelines. Some of them are at, they only assist if you have zero income, some assist at two hundred percent. So there's no solid answer to that, so I think this has been working well for us.
Sorry, can you, can you, that hundred percent, what is that?
For a family size of one, the hundred percent is one thousand three hundred and four dollars.
Is that per month?
Per month, yeah.
One thousand three hundred and four?
Yeah.
Family of one?
Yeah.
Family of how many?
And then it goes up from there. For like a family of five, it's about thirty-three forty, so. Before the, where the income guidelines were, we were unable to assist anybody that was receiving social security pretty much. So at least this, and like I said, the numbers haven't went up a ton, so. Hope you have any other questions.
I'll second the motion. All right, we've got a motion in the second home. If you have a say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item nine C, resolution that amendment number one of the Black Hawk County Secondary Roads Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Six Five-Year Program, which changed the funding source and project number from project DGAC zero zero seven XT dash zero seven, rig replacement on Eagle Road over Miller Creek, be approved in direct the chair aside for same as recommended by Catholic News. So move.
So this has to do with, I told you last week that we had received, we are applying, eligible to apply for competitive highway bridge program, title bridge grant. This, to be in accordance with the rules with the DOT, we need to amend our, our five year construction plan. This is changing, keeping the day, the date of fiscal year twenty-seven, we're keeping the year the same, but like, David said, we are changing the funding source and then the project number so that we can apply for the grant. The application is due in August and then we should know by the end of the year if Iowa has been selected to receive the grant.
So we changed the funding source prior to the approval, the award of the grant?
Correct. That's per DOT, per federal guidance, yes.
State and local government make no sense to me. This is remarkable. All right, roll call, please.
Sure.
Yes.
Brand?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Kurtback?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. Item nine D, motion to approve bent smoke, uh, smokehouse food truck to use Black Hawk County ground on July one, twenty twenty-five from eleven AM till two PM in the southeast parking lot of the Pine Crest Building located in fourteen oh seven, and it's happening.
So move.
Second.
It's not a quick question. I thought we, I thought a couple, maybe a year or two ago, we just said that as long as uh, we get certificate of insurance and that sort of stuff, they don't have to keep coming back for the food trucks. Am I remembering that conversation correctly?
Is this a new one? This is the new one, I think. I don't think I've.
It's a new food truck, but it's.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Would require a policy change.
Got it.
Keep us looking.
All right. Uh, this is a motion to approve the use of a, of a food truck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Item nine E, resolution that the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six property casualty, casualty and liability insurance coverage and risk management services renewal is recommended by PDCM Insurance with primary coverage through the Iowa Community's Assurance Pool, ICAP, in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and four dollars, a six point eight percent increase. Be approved in direct the chair aside as recommended by the Assurance Committee.
I'd say so move, but I was gonna say, Michelle, are you gonna comment to this or talk, speak to the?
If you want to hear about it, we can.
Yeah, well, I think the board, yeah.
Yeah, this, honestly, this is the lowest increase we've had in a couple of years.
This is the one?
The lowest increase that we've had in a couple of years.
Was this a budgeted increase?
We're right on budget. We, we won't have much cushion for adding items throughout the year. Sometimes we do have to add large pieces of equipment as we purchase new. But for the most part, we are squeaking in under budget. If you remember, at budget time, I did. Uh, but for the most part, we are squeaking in under budget, if you remember, at budget time, I did bump this budget. Because last year, we decided to hold it to the previous year and then we were hit with a very large increase, so we were not budgeted well for twenty twenty five. So I think for twenty six, we are pretty close with this vote. And most of the coverages are remaining the same, so we did not have to reduce coverage in order to keep the premium there. We did increase a couple of things slightly regarding crime things for employees and I think those are the only changes that we really made.
This is quite, covers quite a few things in all of this, my understanding, besides just properties.
Right. And liability, so we carry a thirteen million dollar umbrella policy, for example, that overlays our property and other policies, there, yeah, there is a whole.
Correct.
Um, page of tech coverages for buildings, equipment, directors, you know, employment practices, insurance, there's, yeah, it's, it is very comprehensive program. Cyber is included in this as well.
Have we had much for claims against any of this?
Um, we have not had many large claims in the past couple of years anyway. We, we do routinely, you know, especially with vehicles, there are accidents that, um, we do work with PDCM. And ICAP to work through that process and just address those. Most of those, um, are. Not, not caused by county, you know, they're, you get hit by someone who doesn't have insurance or we just allow them to help us work through the process, those kind of things. And we did have, well, we did have hail at, um, Agri Hills. As it turned out, I believe that ended up being below the deductible, which is why we need to keep funding our self insurance fund. We have increased over the last several years, we did increase our deductibles somewhat, just to make the premiums make sense, because we were seeing. Just huge percentage increases to maintain very low deductibles. So now, for example, on buildings, we have, we are responsible for the first seventy five thousand dollars of whatever damage there is.
And you sent out copies of the minutes, did you not, or did, maybe you just sent them to the committee for review or?
At this point, we're.
They are forthcoming.
Yeah, we just, we, PDCM had requested to review them, we just got them back Friday and working on it yesterday.
I missed them yesterday.
No, that was fine, it wasn't a rush, I just remembered seeing them and was talking about them because of, because we had a change in last year's.
Yes. Yes, and that's been corrected now.
Yeah, and then, yes, we just wanted them to review them so that we didn't have the same issue that we had last year.
Hard to remember a year ago what happened at those meetings, yeah.
There was a environmental policy that we had discussed as a board, is that in?
Yeah, you'll get those, okay.
We did.
Into this.
Yes.
Yeah, but we haven't, that was a three year policy, so it does not come up for renewal until fiscal twenty seven, so we can.
And of course, PDCM still recommends that we have that, so, at this point in time.
Fireman is changing, not in our favor, so.
Even though we've gotten better, I was gonna say, the protection and the things that we've been doing were much improvements, so. It's a bad case, but they answered it, yeah, it's a good memory. Three years ago. No, I'm thinking, when I read those minutes, I was like, mm. No, I made a motion, I think, so.
Yep, and Chris seconded it.
Okay, thank you. I don't want to.
Uh, we'll do a roll call on this resolution.
Leyland?
Yes.
Brand?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Pertenbach?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes. Item nine F, motion that the county auditor be authorized and direct to transfer one hundred and twenty five thousand from the general fund to the self insurance property liability fund for the FY twenty, FY twenty six is recommended by the insurance.
That is actually for FY twenty five, we're taking that out of the twenty five budget coming now, yep.
Oh. Yep. Thank you. All right, do you have a motion?
Second.
A motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item nine G, resolution to approve change order number one final for Cedar Valley Nature Trail, Division two, bid package one, Structures Contract Attendant Construction, Inc. Decreasing the contract amount by twenty five thousand, four hundred ninety five dollars and ninety four cents. As determined, uh, through quantity verifications by the project engineer and utilizing American ref, rescue plan funds. Change order number one final, uh, will decrease the current contract amount from one million, three hundred ninety eight thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars and twenty seven cents to one million, three hundred and seventy two thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty three cents. The same has been approved by the Conservation Board and recommended for approval by two of the boards. So moved.
Second.
Mike Henderson, Director, County Conservation, any questions, I mean, it's, it's decreasing, so, yeah, it's a good thing, so.
Don't need to ask why, just accept that.
Yeah. It overestimated just a little bit, so, that's all right.
Michelle, when, when rescue funds come back, even though we've. Uh, even though we planned for them to go out and obviously there's a decrease, I hope we're gonna have to expect here. How, how does that work within the rules, cause this was not, um. This was not, um, oh, revenue replacement, this was correct.
Correct, so, and this, because we weren't aware of this amount, by December thirty first of twenty four. It will reduce the amount that's being funded by the ARBA, what I call ARBA expense category, that's how I keep it straight in my own head.
Yep.
But, so what, that, it's, yeah, the, the quarterly project reporting is being quite a challenge, because every time we have one of these changes. What I am doing is increasing the health department's, the one I've been kind of using as my bucket, to catch everything, because we couldn't fund all of that with ARBA expense dollars as we were out of them. So, as each change comes in, I, I'm having to report a change. So we will end up funding another twenty five thousand.
Great.
Of the health department, we do ARBA, so yeah, we will still use.
Okay. We'll still use it, we'll have to send it.
We'll send it back, no, there will be no sending back, I'm.
Okay, okay.
We did, we did a good job at getting all our funds committed and so that will not be an issue, it's just a, it's just an interesting record keeping challenge to get it reported to the treasury and.
Okay. It'll just alleviate some of that potentially, but, um.
Yes, yeah. It adjusts that eight hundred and some odd thousand that we're anticipating a general fund.
Yep.
Yep.
True. Thank you, Mike. Thanks, Michelle. Uh, so the resolution, you have a, is there a motion in the second?
Yep, we have a motion in the second.
Okay. Um, roll call please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Pertenbach?
Yes.
Brand?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. Item nine H, uh, resolution to accept the Division two bid package one, uh, Structures Project of the Cedar Valley Nature Trail is substantially completed and authorized payment. Pay out number eleven final containing the project, uh, retainage of sixty eight thousand, six hundred and forty five dollars and ninety seven cents to Taylor Construction, Inc. Thirty days later, um, utilizing American ref, rescue plan funds. The same has been approved by the Conservation Board and recommended for approval by the boards. So moved.
Second.
Again, just a contingency, we did our walkthrough, Taylor Construction was fantastic to work with and, uh, they, they, their punch list was done in no time, so we're good to go.
What is substantially complete versus complete? Is it just mostly, almost all the way?
We, we, we hear about all these things, I, I don't know, it's just.
Kind of a, yeah, Kathy can probably just, how the DOT answers that question, it's.
It's really a, a DOT contract term and it does mean it's like ninety nine, ninety eight percent complete.
Okay.
There might be, um, one final little, what we call punch list item that complete. Like cleaning up, um, some cleaning, site cleanup, for example, but it, it's probably completely done and then if I hope we want to release the, be allowed to release the retainers then.
Right, right, right. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
For them, it's probably not complete till they have this payment.
And I was gonna say, for the accountants in the room, we could, we could, last money to be paid.
All right, uh, roll call please.
Brand?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Pertenbach?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. Item nine I, resolution of the letter of support for the Community Services Block Grant. Low income, uh, Home Energy Assistance Program and Weatherization Assistance Program be approved in the chair direct, uh, directed aside for same, which is requested by Barb Brand, Operation Commissioner. So moved.
Second.
Second.
See, Barb's online.
I am. Um, I, just so you know, I mean, I, I, obviously there's a lot of changes happening with federal funding and, um, these three particular funding sources. Um, are at risk and, um, so our state association is sponsoring a letter trying to demonstrate to our congressional, not trying to demonstrate, maybe remind our congressional delegation. Of the breadth, uh, uh, and, and diversity of support for, um, these programs and, um, you know, Light Heap, uh, this last energy assistance season. We, uh, provided about two million dollars of assistance, um, keeping people's, um, heat on during the winter. Um, and when you qualify for energy assistance, the moratorium kicks, utility moratorium kicks in, so, uh, utility companies can't disconnect electric or heating. From November first to April first, which is, uh, I, a huge benefit to folks. Um, we've also, uh, provided, uh, quite a lot of, of crisis utility assistance over, over three hundred thousand dollars since October first. And about a hundred and thirty five thousand of that was for furnace repair and replacements for, um, low income homeowners. And the, um, one of the reason, stated reasons for potentially eliminating Light Heap is that, uh, with the policies of the administration, they intend to drive down utility costs. So they don't believe that there will be the need, but nothing's gonna replace that hundred and thirty five thousand dollars for furnace repairs and replacements. Um, and then the Community Services Block Grant funding is a tiny little program that nobody really knows about, it's different than Community Development Block Grant. Um, the CSBG comes to us as a community action agency, uh, and our board is authorized with the, um. Power to develop a plan for how those funds are gonna be used to, um, and it's basically an anti-poverty plan. Uh, and we typically use it to co-fund programs, because you know, program costs go up and funding levels often don't, so we use it to fill in gaps. We also use it to cover some of the shared expenses, um, so like in our buildings, we allocate costs based on square footage. For the common areas, we use CSBG to pay for that, so the programs don't have to cover that cost. And we pay for things like our audit and buy down our insurance costs for programs and things like that. Uh, and, but it also is used to, to fund the staff that provide crisis assistance. Often we'll get funds that can provide the assist, or that, that pay for the assistance, but not necessarily the, the staff time that goes into that. And then, uh, the third program is weatherization, which, uh, is designed to reduce overall, um, home energy costs for low income households. Um, we can weatherize both rental units as well as owner occupied, um, and we insulate the, the shell of the structure. We do health and safety checks, um, we often repair or replace, uh, furnaces, hot water heaters. Uh, we check, um, refrigerators and freezers to see that they're energy efficient and in some instances can replace those. Uh, we have to take the old ones away, as I always say, you know, the beer fridge in the, in the garage costs just as much there as it does and, you know, if you've got it running in your kitchen, so. Um, but all of these programs are, are really beneficial to the community and, um, so I, I. Appreciate it if you'd be willing to sign a letter, um, our, our national association believes that, you know, this, between now and September thirtieth, is just an absolutely critical time for. Um, for these programs and, and our services.
Barb, the only question I have is, I guess you're, you mentioned, and I think so many times, you know, we provide a letter of support officially and then have the chair sign it. But this one, everyone's preferring that we just do the link and sign, I mean, there's a few blanks, but it would just be going, that's the fastest way and, we're on, okay, just wanna be sure where we're.
Yes, um, that way, because we're, we're trying to send the one letter with all of the signatures from all over the state.
Great, well, that's what I thought, but I wanted to be clear, cause I think Lori is typing up a letter for us and, so, we'll do.
Oh, sorry about that.
We'll do the link, I know, appreciate your help, but yeah, we'll just do the link, thank you, you'll do the link. Thank you.
All right.
Let's provide if we approve it.
Yes, uh, this is a resolution. Roll call, do we need a, we got a motion in the second.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brand?
Yes.
Pertenbach?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
We'll get that signed after the meeting, thank you, Barb. Item nine J, motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at nine oh five, Tuesday, July eighth. In the boardroom, two oh one, uh, the Black Hawk County Courthouse, three sixteen East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa. Proposed ordinance number seven seven dash two nine eight, a request by Daniel Craft to rezone one point eight four acres of land from A Agriculture District to AR Egg Residential District. To build a new single family home located west of ten thousand, one zero eight three zero, South Lake Field Road. So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at nine oh seven on Tuesday, July eighth in the. Boardroom, two oh one, the Black Hawk County Courthouse, three sixteen East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on the proposed ordinance number seven seven dash two nine nine. Requested by Bethany Fisher to rezone two point one seven acres of land from A Agriculture District to AR Egg Residential District. To replace an existing single family home located at six nine zero six East Wright Bank Road.
Second.
About a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Discussion of possible board action for FY twenty six Community Service Funding Conventions.
So I, I didn't email with the attachments, I do want to put them up.
Corey, do you wanna?
F G N?
It says it's on, I don't know.
Is it green?
It was, now it just changed.
There we go, maybe it just wanted to try it twice. Well, I did it once and it was green, but it changes. All right, so, um, Gabby and Lori and I kind of just have kind of edited the language, really not a lot of substantive changes. I, we have added this first paragraph with a couple of sentences. Gabby has experience with applying for grants, so she felt it was important that we disclose to the public. How much the pool of money is that they're requesting. She also thinks it would be helpful to say, and I, so I left some blanks in that last sentence in that first paragraph, but she thought it would be helpful if we'd say, for example. That we plan to award ten grants of ten thousand dollars each, so that then your applicants know exactly. As they decide whether they want to apply, they can determine what it's worth to them, I guess, to apply for that amount of money. I was not sure that the board would want to be restrictive, so I gotta put it in there with some blanks and leaving it there for you to discuss. We did try to move, we talked about this being only for services, we tried to emphasize in here, this does not include capital improvements or acquisitions. That was the intent in the past anyway, so we wanted to be more clear about that. There is preference in there to organizations that are either located in or have a branch office in Black Hawk County. We've stated, I, I tried to kind of group the public purposes, just to help people, um, with which category they might fit in. We've stated, I, I tried to kind of group the public purposes, just to help people with which category they might fit in. Of all the topics that were in the previous year's applications, I think are still here, they've just been kind of sorted by category. Some cases where they felt repetitive, we tried to combine them into just one line, just trying to simplify the application issue read. We do talk about presentations being required to be made to the board as part of the application process and we added some key things that we thought people should disclose in that presentation to you at the bottom of page two. See those five items that we added? And then we also talk about the evaluation criteria in the, right in the application and we'll also link that scoring rubric or whatever scoring methodology you choose to use, so the applicants can have access to that when they apply or before they apply.
So mostly in the evaluation criteria though, it looks like nothing's changed?
No, nothing has really changed, we just spelled it out, we spelled out more of the items in the application in kind of bulleted form that kind of matches the scoring sheet, just, I'm just trying to help people see the consistency in what we're asking for.
This is Chris, my only suggested edit, I think this looks really good, and I think it's pretty clear the types of things we would wanna fund uh, with all the categories listed, but I would suggest, just to further clarify it, that um, in the places where we say economic and community development, that we change that both on this letter and in the scoring matrix uh, to, to um, economic, community and social development.
What would social development include?
Um, it can include anything from uh, addressing uh, po- poverty issues and all that kinda stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, long as they fit the public purposes. But the thing is, I mean, that was kind of the clarification, I mean, which book those people we were speaking to were talking. Right, Mike?
Well, that's it. I was just asking, Michelle, I thought those concerns were uh, were already included kind of within the existing public purposes. And I'm wondering if we, if we start adding to them, if we don't get it, you know, we're kind of at a lengthy list as it is.
Very, very.
Been a nice job paring it down in categories, but now, but I don't know what they're stating exactly, and I gotta go back.
I just meant, I knew the public purpose was, and services was something that we were very careful to make sure.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be a contract for services and it's gotta serve public purposes. Board identified uh, what those public purposes were, that can be changed, of course. And then the uh, you know, for an application to be granted, it has to be a contract for services that provides uh, that serves one or more of those public purposes.
Chris, I think when, when, when I think of your point on social, it does feel like that's achieved in basic necessities. There's also other basic necessities, which piece it pretty broad.
Yeah, I, I think that is kind of.
Community development too.
Yeah.
Well, I'm curious, what else besides uh, poverty related stuff, what else do you have in mind? I guess to Mike's point is a good point, like this could open up a ton of extra unneeded, unnecessary applications.
I, I kind of think they're already there, I think he just wants to add that term, we don't necessarily have that term perhaps in some of the sentences, so I think, I don't know, but it's really gonna change what we're offering.
Socially.
To contract.
I don't think it's gonna change what we're offering or the types of applicants we get, but I think that it just further clarifies, 'cause I know that when we initially started putting these criteria out, I did get some feedback that people thought we were moving into just economic development, and sometimes people use the terms economic development and community development interchangeably and so it doesn't really reflect all the things that we're willing to fund.
And, and what was your term, Chris, is it social something, or what was it?
I just said uh, that we, where that term comes up, that we change it from economic, we, where it lists economic and community development, we just add economic, community and social development, but.
For example, if you look at the evaluation criteria, the first item right now says demonstrates economic impact or community development. I think it would be simple and appropriate that we could add demonstrates economic.
Community.
Community.
Or social.
Or social development, I don't, I don't think it really changes what we're doing, but it does make it more clear that we're considering that one of the things that we're evaluating, so I, that, I don't think that's a problem to add that.
But economic impact is a little bit different, so economic development, community development and social, or.
I, I guess economic impact and or community and or social development is what I would do there, unless you wanna change the scoring sheet, that could be done too, if you wanna add, you know, break those out or something.
If we just re, if we just rephrase that as economic, community or social impact.
Yeah.
I think that's.
I guess, otherwise, yeah, I think it's hard, makes it more difficult to determine what we're doing, yeah, okay, thank you. Does that work for you, Chris?
Yeah, I like social impact.
So the first paragraph, the last sentence seems kind of odd, looking at the different rates, numbers we put out in the past.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if that's, I understand the reason why, but I don't see that we're looking at the different numbers, you may have one, you wanna give low money more to than others, less to some.
I like that, yeah, I like the identification of a hundred thousand, so people know it's not a million dollars out there, but I do like the freedom to request what you think you need.
Yeah, all right.
I thought, um, one, one thought I had on the number range, uh, numbers was to, um, in the first blank put ten to, between ten and twenty, uh, grants we awarded in the amount of normal than ten thousand each and that gives us the, some flexibility.
Sure, if you would, yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
Some, the other one, the other things that were limited, yeah.
I mean, I, I, I think, I think that just limits us to a, to.
Only.
Oh, I mean, if we're, if we're capping at ten thousand each award, to me that feels certain agencies that can be impactful, other agencies that may not be able to be enough. Um, I, I guess I would, my preference would be, you know, we're not to, no application should exceed twenty-five percent of the pool, which is a hundred, so at that point, your twenty-five thousand dollars would be your max, that doesn't mean everybody should apply for twenty-five thousand dollars, I don't think that most would. Uh, but there are some that do and, and if we cap it at ten thousand per application, just thinking through what we funded in the past. I don't even love capping the number of applications, uh, or awards, um.
I agree.
I'd keep it.
Keep, keep open for however many apply or will be awarded, but I think the dollar cap, maybe fifteen or twenty thousand
Yeah.
is appropriate.
And we almost typically pull back if we need to, everyone can, in a way, it's kind of like my choice.
Just to find out.
Yeah.
As Rich alluded to, I did send you again the history of what you've awarded, so that you could see.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's been, yeah.
I appreciate that, I was really surprised at some of the numbers in the past.
Well, it's just been like the last couple of years, we've tried some of that, but you know, so.
I can't open the file, those PDFs that you sent, I've been unable to, would they be able to be pulled up, up on the screen?
What do you wanna look at?
Uh, yeah, just the funding history of the last three years.
Second, I'll try to make it larger enough that you can actually see it. So you have the names of the entity and who they applied for and the amount awarded for each of the three most recent years.
And we've had a hundred thousand budgeted for that the last couple of years, or was it more?
We did more.
It was, it was bar.
It, it's, it was a hundred thousand for, pretty regularly in the last two, it's been higher, but.
Okay.
And.
But that was including food bank in that too, where, we have food bank separate this year.
Last year, food bank was a separate budgeted item, because it was awarded.
Yeah, and awarded, yeah.
Thank you.
The total's on there. So we, I believe we pretty much started out budgeting a hundred, but we then allocated.
It used to be solid waste funds that we had available, and it wasn't what the county funded, and then, and we, there was a committee that evaluated them and made recommendations to the board then, those funds.
Right, that's how this started.
Then when that discontinued, because they wanted to start using that funding for their own cells and stuff out at the solid waste um, facility, um, then the county decided that we'd still like to continue it, and so we did, but we kind of capped it about that same number that they did, a hundred thousand, and just thought it would see how it goes.
Right.
We did increase it, 'cause we had some reserves and different things that we used for a couple of years. That's, that's why some of those numbers were.
But last year, we. Yeah, last year, we budgeted a hundred out of general and budgeted out of.
Reserves, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll be blind if I look at that in three. You're gonna have to be a lot larger for me, so that's all right, no, I didn't need to see them.
It's hard to get all that data on you.
Like an eye test.
Yeah. Helps if you're on your computer, 'cause then you can.
So did, so are we saying we like the, we like identification all right of the hundred thousand, and it gives everybody the amount, but we don't wanna say how many or, or to what level? Or do we, we do wanna cap it at twenty or twenty-five, I think came up.
I would rather not have anything under.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we ultimately are the ones who can, we can make the determination, I, um.
I guess the greatest one came through and we wanted to give a hundred thousand dollars to somebody, we could do it. It gives us the freedom to do it.
Yeah, this is freedom.
Yeah.
We're, we're just putting the term generally, this is how we would aim to do it, make any difference? I, I, I do like the idea of having people have, like applicants having some idea generally what to expect.
I mean, most of the applicants are return applicants, right, so they've got some.
There are, there are some new ones every year, but.
I'm looking at the different amounts and there's some that may apply that only need twenty-five hundred or five thousand, may make a huge impact to them, or so others need more, but.
Oh yeah, we had several of those, small.
Yeah, I just, I think some of the smaller uh, could make a bigger impact to some of them. Maybe newer.
And I, I think as we look at the evaluation criteria, that can also help and hopefully by spelling it out and as we're having conversations with entities, one of the graded criterias, this clearly describes the project's goals, that has not always been the case, some of these applications have basically been for more broad sort of underwriting of their programming, um, versus specific projects.
Yeah.
Um, where I, I feel like with just the orientation of this document, it does help call out that we're gonna grade on specificity, not just generalities.
Yeah, I like it, I think they, you know, it'd be a year to try it and, and see exactly how it changes the process for us to improve it. And I'm seeing this, like I said, they have the link to it, so they actually see the eval form and know it, yeah, built into it. I do think, um, I, you've got, done a great job, I think, of talking about, you know, things that don't qualify, but I just thought I'd still put in caps or large letters with the do not, like the not eligible, using the not, because people read right past that every time and they look at, and they still put in the vehicles and equipment and things, we've had that issue.
Yeah, I think, I mean, there's only three items listed in the service, services that do, uh, do not include, I would do those as bullet points. Um, just helps them stand on the limit more.
Anything to emphasize it, yeah, I like it doing that.
We can do that.
Bold colors, whatever, yeah, that's good. And then we send them back, well, I guess, yeah, they send them back, sorry, or they don't qualify, so.
Um.
So maybe we just, we just, we don't cap them, we leave it at their need and them determining it, and they see how, what the pool is and doesn't mean we have it anyway, I mean, we, we have the selective ability at that time to.
I did, yeah, I did put in the grants or what are expected to be awarded, so I was trying to give a little bit of wiggle room, but you could delete that whole sentence, I think, if you chose.
Which sentence is there?
Wait, what again?
So.
Oh, the last sentence of the first paragraph?
Yes, yeah, you could just delete that if you wanted to.
I got a period after, twenty-six, twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
And, and just.
There is, there is a period there, it's just deleting after that.
That's what I mean, and then, yeah.
How, how were the public purposes decided? Was that through by code?
Mike, oh, go right in, Mike.
Well, so, public purposes, we, we realized we needed to identify public purposes that were going to be served by their service contracts, and so several years ago, I wanna say it was probably about twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, I uh, kind of teed up a list of uh, different possible public services that I, or public purposes that I brainstormed up my own. Incidentally, I've already accepted all of them as I had proposed, so.
That wasn't the intent of Mike, but it was, we just opened up.
So yeah, that's how, but I tried to cover, when I, when I came up with those, what I, what I really tried to do was look at the funding that we had done previously and say, well, what certain, what types of services were we trying to have offered uh, to our citizens through this funding? And, and I, you know, quickly, there was kind of a pattern of what types of things we were, we're offering. And so that was the basis for what I proposed, and we agreed at that time. Rob, I'll be supportive.
Well, and you're talking about teeing it up, but I was gonna say, and what really teed up when we did that was the Rob Sand directive to everyone in the state saying it will be for services only, it will not be granting or funding groups, it will be providing services. So that is the whole change for us.
Is, is his basis, the const, I think it's in the constitution, that says we can't, we can't give money to others, so
Yeah, we'll just find out, yeah.
That was the purpose of, you have to create a contract and you have to be basically buying a service from these entities that aligns with your reason, earning a business.
Has to serve a public purpose, and the uh, and, and basically, it was an interpretation that very few of any counties really understood prior to that point.
Could, could we add like prevention services in there?
I, there's no reason we could, and those might be, uh, let me take a look at this here, uh, those might be in there, you know, so to speak, but I mean, for example, you know, nutrition and healthcare, health, healthcare, um, poverty of providing basic necessities. I don't know that I have, or that we have uh, substance abuse or something.
Well, we have, yeah, I mean.
It could be included in some.
Yeah, and so looking through like past awards, right, One Cedar Valley, there's, a lot of their work is centered around prevention, right? And so we, we, they're able, even if we aren't necessarily saying substance abuse, I know, I know that does say health and mental or physical and mental health, I think, is one of the categories, those are all the.
Health and healthcare, including mental health, and then if you're talking about different kinds of prevention, we've also got domestic. And health and healthcare including mental health and then and then if you're talking about different kind of prevention, we've also got domestic viol- violence categories too, in case that was included in there.
Are you thinking substance or are you thinking?
Oh, sex abuse, education, prevention, uh I don't know, um.
Safety, really from domestic violence, assault and sexual abuse is safe.
Abuse, yeah, it's under safety. Okay.
Yeah, crisis prevention assistance.
Okay.
Yeah, so. Tried to include that more or less at the time, but I I did not in this list, did not include the word prevention, don't believe. Relative to sexual assault, but there definitely is.
Crisis prevention, I think.
Yeah, it did, it did under crisis, you're right, you're right, crisis prevention and assistance.
It is, I don't know, I'm not being a grant of uh applicant of that, so I don't know, um. But I just said, I thought, well, as somebody, if I'm in the prevention business, uh of course, they would probably have a better scope on this than I would, but. Would you be turned away from applying from some of the stuff if you don't see anything directly related to prevention service? So I know we've got a lot of other stuff in there, but uh in the community that focuses on prevention work. But. Anyway, that's just my two cents.
I could see that being added.
So, well, do you wanna add, we could.
With the adding.
We could change, we could say prevention of and relief from domestic violence, domestic assault, sexual abuse. And you already have crisis prevention, so maybe that explains it.
I think that's a good idea without adding, so yeah, the question is.
Yeah, we have to.
And along those lines. Do we, under basic necessities, we've got physical and mental healthcare. Are are we putting substance abuse, are we sort of categorizing that within mental healthcare similar to what the state clearly does now? Otherwise, we we're not hitting on that issue either.
Which which specific subset were you just saying did?
Uh, under basic necessities?
We say physical and mental healthcare.
Yeah, we do, um.
Cause we we do have the opioid dollars, but those dollars are specific to heroin additions, not any of the other.
And the reason we haven't had to discuss that and determine what we wanna do in direction of that is because of the state initiative right now that everybody's waiting to see what programs they can.
We're weak.
Yeah.
Oh, we hope.
Yeah.
I wish something had turned up, I just don't know what we do with what everybody does. Something, some guidance.
It could, it could be.
You could say.
I don't know about basic necessities or safety, which category I would put that in.
I'd put it in safety.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Another bullet point there under safety with substance abuse.
We can.
So are you saying uh put in uh. Prevention uh under special or sorry, under poverty and provided for basic necessities?
I think I think Dave is the same, it would be easy to add into safety, crisis prevention.
Yeah, 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 that I agree with, I'm sorry, I'm misunderstanding there.
Trying too hard to create a category, Brian, Mike.
Yeah.
I keep trying to.
I know, twenty's enough or whatever we.
I don't know, looking back on it, I think I hit a loss.
We thought we did. I did wanna add one thing, Michelle, where you've got the the statement that's about uh having a branch office within Blackout County, there you located our and provide services to Blackout County residents.
Yep. Yeah, that was there at one time, we left it.
Oh, I just meant, I wanted to make sure that they're providing services for our counties.
Well, yeah, I guess that's up in the first sentence, but we could probably add it again.
Question on this, well. I have a question on the scorecard, but let's get through the criteria, I guess, first. Mount it on the criteria.
Ready to go to that?
What?
Uh yeah.
So you make those changes and flip it out to us, I assume, in a way, kind of like, is this what we all buy?
Yeah. Yep. I will.
Let's just get to one like uh related prevention, so it just makes me think like when I was working with like doing gang prevention work a few years ago. And there's not a whole lot of places and I don't even know if there's any programming that does anything like that now. Uh but if it's anything of violence prevention initiatives and things like that.
Crime deterrence?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What what term do you use?
Crime deterrent.
Cause I just recall that it there wasn't a lot of popularity in supporting prevention programming seven years ago because. How do you. Great the effectiveness of it, which how do you track something that doesn't happen, you know?
Yeah.
But it's changed now.
Well, I don't know, I mean, we were we were very lucky in getting like decat funds and federal funding, surprisingly, which helped us a couple of years, but. I don't know if the if the rhetoric has changed ever since then or not. But the, you know, perhaps there's, for what we're doing, three thousand bucks would have gone a long way, cause it it was completely voluntary.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh and it's just buying meals or equipment related to the programming, so.
I was looking Kathy, it's like, sorry Kathy, but she's gotta stay till her consent consent agenda item.
Well, yeah. Oh, yes.
Well, you'll know everything you're curious to know about community funding.
Um.
Never know when we might need her to define something for us.
So, uh yeah, I'm comfortable with criminal deterrence, I think in that safety category of.
Yeah, that would be a good.
That that seems like it encompasses enough.
Yeah, some kind of services, yeah.
So my question on on the grading, so we're all gonna, we're all gonna fill out.
Yeah.
Um.
Or is what that what like Michelle or Lori or somebody, I guess, makes certain that they met the qualifications, so we don't get them until they do. How's that? I mean, you know, like we don't just get them or we know which ones did, if we wanted to look at them again or something, but.
I think, yes, I think I would like to pre-screen.
And so.
At all this time, I we did not do that before, but I think if we're saying it's not eligible, then let's.
Yep.
Take it out at the beginning.
Yeah. That's what different makes it easier for us.
Yeah.
Okay.
S- so then.
Us, we only each do one of these.
So. So we each do one of these.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
It is this. I only know this from experience, one of the grants, right? Um, cause you there are there are different weights to each of these categories, um. So will we each evaluate community need clearly identified and and quantified and score defined project goals separately and then that will?
And your total for those two, the total you can give us thirty points.
Okay, and will that automatically, so so we're just gonna grade one to one to ten on each of these things and then will it be formatted so that that thirty reflects if it's a nine and a nine? It'll be a twenty six.
Yeah, I it, yeah, that's the, but if you have other experiences, we would.
Yeah, I can.
We can certainly change it, cause yeah, what we were thinking is we would just. You would each score.
Yep.
All of them and trying to show, you have a total of thirteen points for those first two. The next one has four items and you have a total of forty points to award there and you don't have to award that, you make it zero, whatever you want. And then we would either add them all together or and average them or whatever, whatever you would like.
Quite. Quite usually, I think we're making it too hard, I think if we if we saw a project there and we know it meets those, I'd just give it a third in total and. I don't know, it's like, go which ones.
These are just guidelines, you don't have to break it down.
Yeah, I just meant, when I get to a hundred, that's kind of the your winners and then when we're all together, like it's to me, that's even easier.
Yes.
I I just meant, but you know, we wanted to do it for yourself.
I just, I could foresee us though getting to a point where almost everything is a hun- is checks all of those boxes. And then we're sort of left debating.
I don't know.
Applicant versus applicant, right, where I think.
Yes, that that would be an issue.
So I think.
See, I don't think that we do that, do you think we will? You think there'd be that possibility that, well, I don't mean for the ease that we couldn't all say, okay, they get forty, they get forty, I mean, thirty, forty, twenty, ten, and we do that, I think.
Yeah.
I'm expecting more thought process from us and being, especially when you know who they are. You'll be looking at who they are and which ones you wanna fund, because you might have some that you really know and want to see funded anyway.
Sure.
And be high scores for everything, probably not.
I think they, I think though from a from a. Uh probably a fairness.
Mm-hmm.
So that we take a little bit out of the, oh, I really like this applicant, cause I would, right, like, and it and it's it's human nature.
Sure. When it's new, I'd like to.
If we were to evaluate every application off of the same criteria.
Mm-hmm.
And if someone got a nine out of ten, you know, yes, they're impacting, well, they're uh they've got other community partners, but when I look at the grand scheme of things, it's not as many as some of the other entities, right?
Mm-hmm.
I I think I think it does probably get us to a little bit more of a of fair allocation versus. This is a personal project and then how do we.
Yeah.
How we round all those out?
When it's hard, yeah.
You know, after, once we get to twenty applicants, twenty five applicants.
Yeah.
Five board members all having opinions, I think if.
That could be. And then there'll be a scorer, somebody that raises to the top, obviously.
Then I, yeah, cause then I think you could say, okay, your your high is at ninety six percent and your low is at seventy percent.
Mm-hmm.
Where do we want to, where do we wanna sort of create that floor at that point?
Mm.
Um, but you can do it if you're if you're taking each of these scoring.
Well, I'll do my best, I'll do my best, I just meant if somebody didn't, you still gotta score as long as you end up with scores.
One on ten.
I'll do my best, that one, I just meant if somebody didn't, you still gotta score as long as you end up with scores.
Yeah, yeah, as long as you end up with scores.
And and not do a. Didn't do that one, I didn't think they met that one, so.
Mm-hmm.
Hmm, I'm this, I'm excited about this.
Yeah.
Quite honestly, and and helping.
You haven't had this in the past?
No.
Okay.
No. And we've done a lot of different reasons, some of that also pleasant.
Yeah. On the project feasibility and sustainability and budget. Those two categories seem very similar to me.
Which two again?
Project feasibility and budget.
Yes. Oh.
I mean, if realistic costs.
I'll leave items under and I don't feel that way though.
I I guess I would say things like, um. Realistic costs. Point to the project feasibility and sustainability, as they do with obviously the general budget, but it. If if you can't, can't pay for the program, you the pro- the program is not gonna be realistic.
Will they understand that when they see that as the the item two realistic cost, will they know this is what we're looking for or will it be five to? I'm I'm just trying to make it easy for them as well, when you say like, I don't know.
Well, they're not gonna see this, this is for our, it's right.
No, but they see, they see this for it, they see, they know.
I think they should see. Oh, yeah, that way they know what we're gonna evaluate along.
They just don't know, yeah.
We can take that off or change it to something else.
Oh, I think it helps them, I just should know this is how I'm being evaluated, so to see if like.
Okay.
You could. Yeah, I don't know.
We haven't had it before either, that, you know, we're supposed to be willing to change it in the future, but I just like to try it to see, I think it's time of it, I'd like to know what I'm graded on.
And you're you're really talking to project feasibility, sustainability section, are you are you saying?
I'm talking about both of those, I wonder if if it's really just one category, but.
I I think there's definite uh differentiation between them.
Okay.
You're right, though, I think the realistic cost is difficult to, what does that mean?
They shouldn't be saying real, and that's why they.
Of course, they're realistic.
Yeah.
We could, may maybe we just remove that one.
What's the thought, what was the thought process behind that?
I'm trying to remember, no, I did this like a year ago.
Yeah.
Well, that that maybe that's just like. Here's what we're asking for, but in reality, here's what we need to make this operational, so I assume the realistic cost would be much higher than what they're.
Showing it's realistic.
Yeah, look at.
I made that.
Yeah, you're right, I want a real number.
A real number.
Request versus need.
Oh, I need everything, yeah, hmm, I do that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe it's realistic request. Realistic is a tough, I get it, it's probably a tough word, is it?
It is, yeah.
It is, like, I'm trying to search for a better one.
Cause it's gonna be different, I mean, every request.
What cost per residence benefit?
Is it, is it needs based request?
Sure.
So then.
Needs based, so it has to be needed.
So you you got it, yeah. I mean.
For their budget.
Yeah, the grant, every day, yeah, needs pieces, right, they're 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 nonprofits, they're.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're trying to lose. Every day.
More needs than ever, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's see, I like residence benefit and I like more funding sources.
Yeah.
That's good.
It's just that.
You could just maybe scratch that one. It's a ten.
Man, we've got enough, we got.
It's it's only a ten.
What, yeah.
It's a ten. It has to be in qualification, that's ten.
We have eleven categories.
Oh, they have needs justification, maybe that's what you were trying to say.
There you go, yeah, yeah.
Care to get some research?
Do we think I have it?
There you go.
Needs justification, yeah, I think that's.
Can we phrase for a means based request for application process?
Realistic cost.
It it I see my one.
I'd ask that one, see what they say.
No, never mind. I don't think it came up, so that's a good sign.
Okay, so we, so you've got enough to, is that the only ones that we thought were kinda redundant?
Okay.
It's good subject to our interpretation.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I don't know if they did that. Plans for future funding.
Yep.
Yeah. See.
Yeah, some of these, there are a little, they are somewhat interrelated.
Yeah, sure.
You're.
That's why I I mentioned, I thought even if like that first one was thirty and I thought, yeah, they had multiple, so I just gave them thirty, that's a different, the ones that use the same points, but I get a distinction between.
Well, and so that comes down to how you evaluate each of them, you know, it's the same.
Yeah.
Thing with other things, you might choose to evaluate the first one, then compare the second one to the first one and keep going. That way to force yourself to not give everybody the same, I I've seen that technique before.
So what we left open ended though is the amount, when we end up with even the highest or the pro- projects that are priorities or that we rise to that top level of what we want. Then we have to determine dollar amounts.
Yeah, I mean, so.
Are we okay with that?
So one of the things that we used to do.
Mm-hmm.
Is we would take every application, board members would score.
Mm-hmm.
They'd score based off of our predetermined criteria and they were critical in that, right, there were a lot of. W- when that when that system worked best, there were fives, sixes, sevens and not just nine and ten because.
Yeah.
It feels good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, cause then you just get too much compression at the top.
Yeah.
Then we would compile everyone's together and we would say, we have this amount of money, this was their request, and I don't know that, I'm not saying I su- I'm suggesting this. Next part for this, but we would say, all right, you got, if if you scored ninety five percent, then you got ninety five percent of your request. I don't, I think that was probably the flaw in that system, because it it created a blow of the request, because you knew you were getting dropped down five, ten percent.
And I served on those committees, we do it every time, double it right out, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Um, but it we it it could help us sort of create a floating floor of maybe it is a seventy percent gets funded this year. Maybe it's eighty five percent next year because the applications are just stronger. But then we at least gives us an opportunity to to debate. And and say, okay, the the last ten percent, twenty percent, we're gonna of of those scores, we're gonna pull them off.
So we can go ahead, get this started, get the process going, probably at July one, close to a date, get everything going for this and then determine that, what that piece would be.
How we, how we would, I think, how we would.
Like. Yeah.
Uh.
How much or what that funding.
How we would determine each fund level, if it's based off of. Just their request or. I think it at least provides us with a framework of discussion.
Yeah, I do too, I like, I like, I like that.
It's just.
We could just say something on the application like actual funding will be determined after applications have been reviewed. By the board, just so they know. That's gonna figure into it.
Scored. We'll review and score, cause we'll have those scores.
And I guess one of the things that was kinda surprising to me is we got so many that were awarded last year that we're just writing check for now. And um, do we need to have more? In there about them showing that they're using the funds properly? And um do we need to have more in there about them showing that they're using the funds properly in the application before there's?
Well, I don't think they can do that till they've done it, that's that's the issue.
They have to get rebanking, it's like.
Right.
And we are, in general, we're not providing the only source of funds part for oh, ninety percent of them.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I don't, none of, there's only been one entity that's come and had a problem with waiting till they spent their monkey to be reimbursed.
Some of this take longer.
And obviously, they are not hurrying to get them in, so they're not.
No.
Not being able to not beat payrolls, my thoughts right now. Cause they would be calling in that case.
I like, I mean, some type of that funding mechanism and all like that, that you look at them, kind of see where you're falling and go from there.
Are we at a point where we could publish this July one?
Um, probably, because we could re, I mean, I can get the changes made and out to you to maybe wanna approve it next Tuesday, then I think.
We approve it on, we approve it on the first and post it on.
Get it on after the holiday.
We might be able to get it done on the first, it might, I I don't know whether people's schedules, so it might take us a day or two, but like, approximately.
Yep. Sure.
Yeah, after the holiday or something, maybe two, but real close. I like July kickoff kind of part, yeah.
Yeah. I've had it, I've had it hand hold ask, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, we've wanted, it's been hard to get, we all in the same room, yep.
I know it's coming where. This is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
That's close, yeah.
Um, and then motion today?
No motion today.
No.
Well.
See those changes or recommendations.
Get the changes, get it on the agenda for the first. All right.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Should you go to watch and then come?
Well, let's talk more topics.
Let's call Ted, see if he wants to come hang out at conservation.
Oh, yeah, I like you, yeah.
Okay.
Are you ready for my report or?
What?
You ready for me to address the consent agenda?
Let's do it.
I was gonna say, any items in there for clarification, you bet.
Okay. We would, I would ask or recommend that item two is fine the way it is, item four is fine the way it is under the consent agenda. I would recommend that item three be deleted and we walk. We just talked to Iowa or Eastern Iowa RAC and they are finally deferring that for a week. So we we prefer that we just defer item three until next week.
Item three, which is the Reedland telephone company.
Right, it it should be central, that Iowa was.
That should be central, okay, then that's, it's, helps everybody feel better instead of.
Yep.
Just so everybody, so everybody's clear, that's B three, yes.
Yes, yes.
Consent. Okay, two and four, three to be discussed next week.
So we did have a motion in the second.
We did.
All right, resolution.
So we, uh roll call for approval of items seven A one through three and B one, two and four.
Wait, what?
Yes.
Is that fine?
What's that, I'm sorry.
So the vote is going to be on, uh, cause we've already had a motion in the second.
Yep.
So the vote will be on the approval of seven A one through three and seven B one, two and four.
I doubt this, I I think we should just have another motion, just that we're giving, it's clear the motions for these items.
Okay.
Do I need to receive the first one?
I don't think that's necessary to go ahead.
Well, I'll just, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we accept the consent agenda, items one through three, or A one, one through three, B one, two and four.
Yep, there we go.
Thank you.
All right, so roll call, please.
Shorts.
Yes.
Brandon.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Hurtback.
Yes.
Oh.
Yes. Only two hours and fifteen minutes of group consent agenda, amen, guys.
Thank you, Kathy, otherwise we'd wait another week.
Um, there's a good chance next week I'll be by Zoom, but I'm not sure, I'm gonna need an L talk.
Okay.
Uh, just wanna make sure tonight, we do our first presentation with understanding property assessments. We did post it as a open meeting, I don't know, were you gonna be able to come or are we gonna?
Okay.
Linda?
So, as we.
Be both either or night? There's another one, Chris, I don't know if you were planning to come to one of them?
They're posted either way, KCH, oh, is it still there or no?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, maybe tomorrow night?
Yeah, we weren't sure if you're gonna be able to make it either tonight or tomorrow night to one of the.
The property assessments that they told.
Possibly tomorrow night, depending on how, I think I have the flu, and so I'm just seeing how it progresses.
Okay. All right, we're good.
Mike's going on vacation tomorrow, so do we get, do we get, um, is there anybody that fills in in the meantime for us for the two weeks?
Uh, other guests will be here uh next week. I actually sent that email during this, and I've been admittedly trying to multitask today.
All right.
Just definitely thank you, have a great time.
Anything else?
Yeah, I know, I do too.
Anything else from the board? Otherwise, I'm gonna take a motion to a jury, someone. It's a fucking favor, say hi.
Hi.
These jurors.
I should have included that yesterday, I had her line.